I'm here.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Ripski?
Yes, here.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, do the trustees have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I don't have anything.
I do not.
All right, nor do I. Uh, that will get us, uh, does the administrator have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
That we had a revised agenda with the addition of resolution A five and we had one additional pending warrant added.
All right, Ben, so I think you're coming in now. Can you just repeat that one more time for me? Because I couldn't get, you came in, uh.
Sure, uh, just wanted to, um, point out that we had a revised agenda and an additional pending.
Okay, uh, just a reminder, everybody, if everybody would mute their mics when they're not talking, that will help with, uh, uh, stopping the feedback here. Um, does the administrator, uh, excuse me, we already talked to the, does the fiscal office have any additions or corrections?
Uh, no, I don't have any.
And does the fire department?
No, sir, we're fine.
Oh, I'm sorry. I heard from Bud, an executive session was requested.
Yeah, if we could, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, who's ever called in on the phone? Could you please put your, uh, your phone on mute? You're the one that's causing us some, some feedback here. Thank you.
Alrighty, um, yes, that really helped. Okay, so we have no additions or questions to the agenda except for an executive session requested by the fiscal office. Uh, Dave Homestead, can I get a motion for the approval of minutes on November 4th, please?
Sure, I move that we adopt the meeting minutes for the November 4th meeting.
Tom?
No questions.
I have no questions. I'll second.
Very good. All in favor, say aye. Tom?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. That gets us down to our pending warrants of four hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-four thousand and fifty-seven cents. Um, I did have a question on one of the pending warrants here. Uh, let me see if I can find it.
Was that ID Edge?
Yeah, I have no idea what that is.
Uh, me too.
Uh, yes, Mr. Ferguson, that is for the card printer, uh, for the pool operations. Um, it needed to be serviced and it's an out-of-state process. We had to ship it out.
Okay. And do we own the asset or do?
We do own.
Is it, is it an application or is it actually a, some type of computer asset?
It is a piece of equipment that actually prints cards, uh, both membership cards.
You're cutting out a bunch today. I don't know. Okay.
It is a piece of equipment that prints cards for memberships and pool visits. Uh, it has a lifespan of about 10 years and, uh, it gets serviced every other year or so.
Okay. Other questions on the pending warrants?
I have none.
Dave Homestead, you have any questions?
That was it for me.
Okay, uh, I'll move that we approve the pending warrants for November 18th of four hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. I shall move. Uh, Tom, do I have a second?
Yes, I will second.
All right, all in favor? Tom?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And I will yes too. Thank you. That takes care of our pending warrants. Um, Mike Dirk is on the line today and thanks for being here as always, Mike. Uh, what are your updates, if any, for the New Albany city?
Uh, well, let's see, we met, uh, obviously last night, uh, we, uh, passed several amendments, but it was really re rewriting a lot of the code that applies to, uh, traffic and criminal offenses, bringing it in line with certain state guidelines. Nothing major there. One thing we did do is pass a resolution, uh, to the Ohio General Assembly. Uh, there's a House Bill 789 that was just introduced, I believe, uh, day before yesterday to enable communities to continue to do virtual meetings like we're doing right now. According to the governor's emergency resolutions and that, we were in, we were, are able to do these kinds of meetings until, I think, December 2nd or 3rd or somewhere in that timeframe. Uh, after that, they're not permitted. Uh, there was a bill pending, but it was tied to several other legislative issues and it's been kind of floundering around out there because they can't all agree on all the other add-ons. This new bill is a single issue, uh, to approve virtual meetings from December 1st of this year to June 30th of 2021. Um, and, uh, we as a council, uh, uh, passed a resolution and are sending notice to the General Assembly. We'd like to see that approved. It just makes sense with COVID and everything going on. So, uh, I think that was an important add. Uh, there was discussion about, uh, COVID in the schools, uh, as of the, the night before Monday, there was a meeting and, on the school board. I think there's one staff member with COVID, two students, 28 that are quarantined, so it's a half of a percent of all the students that are out there. So I think they're feeling reasonably good that the numbers continue to be low. Uh, one thing that has concerned them and they commented about is after-school gatherings around Starbucks and Square in front of the library and how students aren't wearing masks, they're congregating and, uh, doesn't matter what they do in school, they're concerned that they're going to have problems there. Lot of discussion, but no way to really enforce that, given Square is the, belongs to the library, the sidewalks belong partially to the rest, to the retailers and partially to New Albany and to New Albany companies, so. Um, lot of discussion, but no resolution along those lines. Uh, we did review our capital budget for next year, specifically, uh, some of the major projects that would be included. Uh, we still have to give final approval to all of the budgets in the upcoming meeting, but don't anticipate anything changing. We have about a $19 million capital budget with about, uh, 16 of it going to roads, uh, and principally ma- maintenance as well as the big project on 62161, uh, right by the fire station there, chief, and looking at a Market Street extension going beyond 605 and wrapping up into town. Uh, those, those are two of the larger ones, uh, the, uh, 62161 about, uh, it's 45% of that is paid through a grant, so, uh, uh, the other things we had were Rose Run, uh, designed for Rose Run 2, which is really from 62 to 605. Uh, Taylor Farms out there on Harlem and 161, the land that we bought out there. Uh, we're going to invest, uh, some money into really cleaning that up, uh, putting in walking trails and some parking, uh, space out there. Uh, and, uh, one thing that hasn't been approved, it's kind of pending, uh, what, you know, depending on a lot of other, uh, information that come in, out on the maintenance farms there, barns, there's discussion about possibly putting solar panels up there for sustainability and they're looking at pricing and what, uh, utilities and other people will provide towards that in terms of grants. So that's the gist of the meeting. Um, lot of other little zoning legislations, but nothing of any importance.
So Mike, with your CARES funding, um, from COVID, have you all, um, designated any uses yet for that funds?
Uh, we did last meeting. One of them is for a software application that will be used by the development department for the online, uh, submission, review and approval of building plans. Um, and they did review that and they feel that it complies with the CARE. We did have, I think, a hundred and fifty thousand that we approved for some soft, small business support during, uh, these COVID times. There was.
I was talking, and I don't know if you've heard this, and maybe Ben could add to this, I was talking to the Genoa Police Chief. And he was telling me that they were able to use CARE Act funds for compensation for the police department. Have you heard of those funds being used for any type of compensation?
No, and we really did not discuss that in the meeting. Uh, over the last bu- several budget meetings where CARE money was discussed, uh, we didn't realize that that was.
Well, but there's, yeah, there is the, the opportunity to use it where people have to quarantine or are taking leave and things like that due to COVID-related, like illness.
Specific raise increases that they were below market value and they increased their salary $10,000 and the funding was coming from the CARES Act and I, I did not know that was permissible. And I'm just going to check with the different, my colleagues here if we can get an understanding if that's a legitimate use.
I, I will tell you from the city standpoint, we never discussed anything in terms of raises or money like that. Now, clearly if there's leave or care for COVID cases amongst um, the city workers or responders, it's things like that. Yeah, that's included, but we didn't, uh, with this last round of money even discuss anything like that. We did discuss a little bit last night because if these, these virtual meetings, I think we had $6,000 that we're going to spend to upgrade the capabilities of our uh, interactive online, uh, broadcast system that we use for those virtual meetings, but it's really to just bring our technology up where it's much more functional in terms of those meetings since it looks like it'll be going on. But it was a small amount and, and that would qualify because of.
Yeah, that's a good amount.
But, but nothing, nothing in terms of salaries or anything like that. I'm sure they would appreciate it if we gave them the $10,000.
I was shocked to hear it, but, uh, Ben Collins, do you know from your, um, review, is that a permissible use of the, the funding?
Uh, in my review of the treasury guidelines, uh, salary increases would, would not be eligible. Um, but I have seen some local governments utilize the hazard pay function of CARES Act dollars, you know, if they have a really high incidence and, um, they're having trouble, uh, scheduling, you know, for different, certain shifts, uh, that, that could apply to police, uh, and/or fire. Um, but just, you know, increasing wages, no, that, that's not an eligible use to my knowledge.
Yeah, I would wonder about, about the sustainability of it. I mean, it's, uh, CARES Act is, uh, if I'm not mistaken, one, one-shot deal and, uh,
Yeah.
you incorporate it.
Genoa Township did pass a levy, uh, a police levy, you know, so there might have been some cross-talk about something else that would allow them to increase salaries. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just found, uh, uh, an item out here on the, the web that talks about another city that said the same thing, except what they noted was that they used the CARES Act funds to take care of some other expenses that were eligible, which freed up funds in the city budget to give people a raise.
Yeah.
So it was, you know, indirectly, you know, it helped.
Yeah. Maybe that's it. You know, I'm, I'm just saying that maybe Ben, as you talk to Jack and others, that we really just make sure, I like that, what, what the city was talking about, technology upgrades or having these types of meetings and other things. Do we have the right technology in people's hands? Um, hazard pay on, I mean, boy, I, I don't know, just again, I think we really need to exhaust the opportunity to make sure we're, we're looking at every way that we can prudently use the funds to benefit our community and our personnel and operations at least, but I'm sure we're doing that. Uh, Mike, thank you very much for your report and your update. That was very helpful. Stay healthy out there. Um, if we don't get to speak to you around the Thanksgiving time.
Yep, thank you, everybody. I'll still be listening for the rest of the meeting, so, uh, happy Thanksgiving if I don't get to stay till the end of it.
Are you going down to Arizona again? Are you staying here?
Uh, end of December through, uh, the 10th of March, I'm going to be in Palm Springs. That's why I hope they pass the virtual meeting.
That's nice, nice, good stuff.
For that resolution.
So, so when I call in, I'll be by the pool and give you guys a little view.
Thanks, thanks.
Just don't go full tuban on us on that, okay?
Yeah, well done, well done.
Thank you.
Uh, all right, so, um, if you can scroll up on the agenda a little bit there, Mr. Collins. We've got some department reports, I believe, uh, yeah, I believe that you're up first, so I'll, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Uh, I also attended the virtual council meeting last night and wanted to share, uh, just a couple of things that I, I heard. Um, there was a, a budget review for council and, and one thing that stuck out was the hotel tax revenue for the city is, uh, uh, down by more, more than 50%, and so I think that's, you know, expected and just kind of indicative of the impact on, uh, activities throughout the community. Um, Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission discussed the virtual meetings for public bodies. Uh, there is some disagreement about the effect of the existing House Bill 197, uh, but I think everyone is best served by a new, um, uh, piece of legislation that will prolong the, the virtual meeting and clarify things. Um, my request for the state auditor's office has always been to make it very clear for local governments what they are permitted to do during this time, just so we don't have questions during audit. I think there was some discussion about, um, salary cost of living increases for city staff. And of course, the, uh, EMS, uh, impact to assisted living facilities, um, throughout the city. On, uh, township business here, we are holding steady on our HRA reimbursements. It's still about 36% over last year and, and as we've discussed in prior meetings, it's really a trade-off um, to the premium cost of the health insurance plan. And so we're, we're really, um, just running even, uh, over 2019 expenses. We will, we do have a resolution to approve the United Healthcare Insurance Plan renewal. Uh, again, that's at a 3% increase over the 2020 rate for the same plan design. Um, all co-pays and benefits remain the same. There is a resolution to address the health reimbursement arrangement for 2021. Uh, my recommendation is that we maintain the current, uh, reimbursements, uh, since the plan design is remaining the same. Uh, we have another resolution to address the employee contribution towards the cost of insurance. Uh, we've had some benchmarks available through MORPC's annual salary and benefits survey. Those have been circulated to the board and department heads, but there is a recommendation for that as well. Excuse me, let me scroll back up. Uh, and then, you know, I did share the information about the city's small business grant program that's, uh, in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, I sent that information to our tenant at 45 Second Street, encouraging them to apply and take advantage of that opportunity. Um, where we stand is the board approved a 50% deferral of the rent for the month of November. There is a, a resolution on the agenda just to, um, uh, approve that. And then we were going to discuss, uh, possible, um, exit of the tenant if they're unable to secure any additional funding. So we'll see what happens over, over the next 30 days.
Uh, Ben, question on that. How, how does the CARES Act funding, uh, with, how, how does that, uh, that we have available for potential small businesses? Or first would they go to the Chamber of Commerce first and see how they fund or not fund? What's the process?
So the city is actually, my understanding, contributed the $150,000 to the Chamber of Commerce to distribute. And so those distributions will have to follow the treasury guidelines and some of those eligible expenses are, um, you know, rent and operating costs, wages for staff, um, equipment, PPE in regard to COVID, those sorts of things. But the qualifications remain the same for those dollars, even though they're transferred, transferred to the Chamber of Commerce. And so there's, um, a little bit of double checking that takes place to make sure, um, from, you know, the local government's point of view, that all of those expenditures remain eligible. Plain Township could conceivably do something similar and transfer dollars to the Chamber of Commerce. Um, you know, our eligible funds would have to stay within Plain Township, uh, within Franklin County, uh, and they have the same parameters.
Yeah.
And Ben, I think the, the only twist I heard to that was that the money was not being transferred to the chamber, but the chamber was being retained to administer the, uh, the grant program. So, uh, so the city would, uh, would still disperse, but the, the chamber would take applications and do all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, there's been different processes, you know, I, perhaps that's better, uh, that retains a, a little bit more oversight
um, to make the direct distribution to the selected applicants.
Yeah, and didn't, um, or do you know where we stand at this point? Because we had some very preliminary conversations a while back about if we had funds available, maybe contributing to the city to add to that pool?
Well, so far, um, we have encumbered our remaining CARES Act funding through blanket certificates to ensure that it remains available through the end of the year. Uh, we have used less than 75% of the funds we've received to date. We do have some, uh, major expenses, um, that we're anticipating. Uh, we've had a couple of, um, quarantines due to some exposure and positive cases and, you know, there's a personnel cost to that of, you know, several thousand dollars. We have some additional equipment that we're planning to purchase, uh, several thousand dollars there, but I, I would expect.
You can, yeah, if you can update us maybe the 1st of December and let us know if there's anything that we might have to, uh, contribute, you know, when you get an update, because I realize some of this other stuff came up, uh, like the quarantine.
Sure, yeah, we can do that. Just to recap, you know, we, we have kind of a hard deadline of December 30th to actually incur the cost. And so our timeline is, is shrinking rapidly, uh, but there would be some opportunity to do a, a program or provide some additional funding. You know, let's say if, hey, the, the chamber's already selected and I've gone through the available funds, do they have a remaining list? Maybe that's an easy way to see it through. So we'll do that first of December.
Yeah, uh, I, I can agree with trustee Homestead and the only thing I would also add there too is I like the idea of the city of looking at technology upgrades relative to the conducting these meetings or other utilizations of technology that falls under the funding. I would just maybe between the fiscal office and the fire department, just make sure that we have a comprehensive review and even, uh, relative to, it, it bobs, just to make sure we're turning every stone. Uh, you, you see fit to ensure that we're using the funds appropriately.
Uh, yeah, definitely. I want to make sure that all of our staff has the, uh, equipment and resources they need, especially for telework. You know, we, we're seeing a significant surge here locally and I think, uh, the need for some remote work will continue indefinitely. Um, we, we have looked at some software solutions, you know, regarding, you know, maintenance or, uh, something. Um, some of the costs are not reasonable, you know, to have a, uh, a cloud-based, uh, maintenance program, you know, it was $6,000 to implement and $5,000 a year in maintenance. Uh, so we just find things that are right-sized.
Well, a- a- and then, uh, again, I guess the final point, and I'm not paraphrasing Dave's comments, but i- i- certainly if we don't have the, the, the funds for them, then we should look at maybe cooperating with the city to get it to the business community for any, uh, assistance that they could utilize. Um, I know that with Governor DeWine's, uh, order that came out to businesses, uh, and, and the curfew, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm sure there's going to be, um, some additional impacts from that.
Sure.
Especially on the restaurant and, and other businesses out there that, later nights and stuff.
I did reach out to a local realtor just about, you know, the current market. Um, this realtor said there's, they're not seeing widespread vacancies within New Albany. There are the typical openings in the corporate office space, you know, as things position. Um, there is a call center that's vacant, I believe. But as far as just small business space, you know, everything is occupied, uh, on the second story of Park in Main and throughout the Village Center. So just a little bit of feedback from one perspective there.
Well, and, and hey Bud, I know at one time, you know, we were looking at virtual meetings and making sure everybody was equipped with the right types of equipment to conduct those virtual meetings. I don't know if, uh, you know, whether it be books or whatever it might be, if there's an opportunity there. I mean, there's some that I know that you were looking at at one time, maybe you and Ben can collaborate on that further.
Yeah, we are working with Ben on a couple of things right now.
Great.
Okay.
Oh, okay, uh, we got some, um, resolutions that we need to get to. Can you pull up, uh, A1 on the screen for us? Uh, this is a resolution 20118A1, a resolution to renew the Township Health Insurance for United Healthcare for 2021. I'll also move on that. Uh, Tom, do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Tom?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Uh, A2, uh, Dave, do you want to take A2, please?
Sure, resolution 20118A2, a resolution to amend the Plain Township flexible benefits plan. Uh, and this sets the employee contribution amounts. Uh, Ben, do we need any discussion on this?
This is a 10% ratio, right, David?
Uh, that's what my question is to Ben.
Yeah, so for transparency, this increases the, uh, employee contributions from, uh, the current amounts of 44, 88 and 132. Uh, currently we're, uh, around an 8% of contribution. When we look at the 2020 MORPC salary and benefits survey, the average in, uh, the area for local governments is 10%. Um, we have not adjusted our employee contribution rates, uh, since 2017. Uh, so just, uh, in order to, um, benchmark those, you know, it's the recommendation that these would be appropriate and reasonable and we'll communicate, uh, the change to F as needed.
Yeah, just as a point of reference, private industry is anywhere from 18 to, like, what's 23, something like that. So these are still very reasonable rates and as Ben noted, we haven't increased rates for three years.
I, I can concur with both your comments. I, I would say that, um, that's an understatement and I'm glad to, to see the benchmarking, uh, study by, um, MORPC, that, that's very helpful, so.
I agree. It's, uh, fair and reasonable and, uh, modest, so that, that's fine.
Well, so, Dave, do you want to move on that?
Sure, uh, if there's no other questions, I will move at option of 201118A2.
I'll second.
Tom seconded. All in favor? Tom?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Uh, that's A3. Uh, Tom, you want to take A3 for me, please?
A resolution to establish the, the Plain Township Health Reimbursement Arrangement for 2021. Uh, and it, uh, provides HRA in the amount of 6,513,000 to be funded by Plain Township. That's HRA1 and HRA2 in the amount of 1,000, 2,000 to be earned with wellness dollars. Also move.
I'll set that up for discussion.
Go ahead.
Uh, Ben, it says HRA2 in the amount of 1,000 to 2,000 to be earned with wellness dollars. If it's not earned with wellness dollars, it's got to be paid out of pocket, correct?
That's correct. So this is the donut hole, the portion of the employee responsibility.
Ben, you're fading away there again.
Typically, we've had, you know, 95% of employees, uh, complete their wellness credits.
Yeah, no, I, I get that. I've just, I'm concerned about that last sentence. Part of the sentence there that says to be earned with wellness dollars, there's no, what happens if you don't earn it with wellness dollars? So I would propose that we just put a period after the 1,000, 2,000. Uh, well, how about change, uh, that to, to May? Because if it's not earned, then it's out of pocket, which is what everyone's expectation should be.
So the 1,000, 2,000. So the one thousand, two thousand, one thousand is for an individual, two thousand for the family?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And how does that compare to last year?
The same.
Okay.
Uh, Ben, my, my concern is the word two.
Sure. Y- yeah, the, the intent is certainly that it's the employee's responsibility and, and they may cover that with wellness dollars. If not, it is out of pocket. Um, so, uh, I'm fine with that edit.
Uh, so I, I would just, um, uh, as part of my motion, I would move that we, uh, change the, the two in that last sentence to May. Are you okay with that? There's a second, Tom?
Yeah, I think it makes sense. Um, yes.
Uh, the only other.
Would ask, uh, how, how many, uh, what percentage of our employees do not earn the wellness dollars?
So typically, it's, it's been a very small percentage, about five percent. Currently for this year, at the end of October, we had, um, thirty-eight employees and twenty-three spouses. Uh, so we weren't quite there. We're about eighty percent.
Yeah. If we could, maybe circulate this back, uh, if we prove this, circulate it back through the staff so they understand that, uh, you know, there will be a significant difference about a pocket if they don't earn their wellness dollars.
Certainly. We, we've continued to communicate that to them monthly through the, uh, later part of the year. Um, we will provide an update to all staff on, on these various items from today. Um, y- you know, it, it's very easy to achieve the, the credits for our wellness program. We've tried to make it, um, very achievable with, with a low burden. And, um, you know, I'm hoping that people will just, you know, go ahead and enter their credits by the end of the year. I, I don't think it's a lack of activity. It's just a, a little bit of legwork to actually enter it into the app.
Uh, sounds good. Thanks, Ben.
So just a couple of clarification points here. With the HRA, your out-of-pocket costs, um, are, are pretty what, pretty much minimal depending on the healthcare that costs that you incur. And the wellness dollars, what percent of the wellness dollars is for a family? So if you have ten percent of the cost on family coverage and you get the two thousand dollars of the wellness dollars back, if you, if you do that, how much of those wellness dollars would cover for your total, total, uh, contributions?
So, um, this program is designed to have a donut hole at the back end. So the employer is funding the first, um, portion of this. So the first, uh, four thousand, eight thousand of the deductible. Um, because we have a high deductible health plan, all the benefits are, uh, deductible applied. And so what we're seeing for this year is about, uh, a third of our members have, uh, HRA usage above, um, three thousand dollars and two-thirds have below three thousand dollars. So I would say most of our staff are not touching the wellness dollars, because those are at the back end.
Right.
And I, if I had to come up with a number out of, um, out of, you know, forty-nine enrolled, we might have ten who, who are really relying on those wellness dollars.
Yeah, and Dave, we structured it this way, if you remember, because it was a, um, an accounting nightmare to, we used to have it up front and it's just, uh, a nightmare to, um, be able to, uh, to do this, um, upfront the way we used to with the current program.
No, I, I'm not worried about when we pay it or how we pay it. I was just curious as to when you really look at the HRA reimbursement and the wellness, what is the family's total out-of-pocket cost? I was just trying to assess that.
Yeah, so keep in mind that we do have a maximum out-of-pocket, um, of sixty-five hundred and
thirteen.
Seventy-five hundred and fifteen thousand total. Um, and, and we'll have a few members who reach, you know, that, utilize all of that. But most of our members, uh, are not, uh, using the benefits to that degree.
So when you work with staff and the maintenance department and the fire department, I think trying to get them to understand, here is your, your ten percent contribution. Here's your HRA, how that works and gets reimbursed for your out-of-pocket cost. And here's your wellness and how this contributes to it. Here's the approximate total cost to you depending on your utilization of the total plan. I think they need to understand that because I think as Dave said many times and Tom, this is an incredibly, well, I use the word, uh, very, very good health plan.
Sure. On average, our staff are receiving HRA reimbursements that exceed their employee contribution.
Precisely. Okay, I'm sorry. Um, Dave, did you move on A3?
Yeah, I moved. Tom seconded.
All right. Thank you. Uh, all in favor, Dave?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Can you bring up, uh, A4 for me, Ben? All right. Um, we have a resolution number two zero one 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 eight, A4, a resolution to approve a lease deferral for the forty-five Second Street property. This has been discussed, um, and we authorized Ben to negotiate this on our behalf. It's a, uh, deferring of the fifty percent of the monthly rent for the property of our tenant there. Um, discussion?
I have none. I have none. I have none.
I'll move on it. Tom, do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
All right, all in favor, Tom?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Uh, that gets us down to resolution A5. Um, Tom, do you want to take this one?
Resolution number two zero one 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 eight, A5, a resolution declaring unneeded obsolete or unfit personal property to be disposed of by internet auction. Also move.
Yeah, I'll second it. And just a question, uh, Jack, I see we're, we're, uh, auctioning off these radios. Are they decommissioned so that nobody can use them to like interfere with, um, with other communications? Or are the chips out of them?
Well, if I understand you correctly, are the radio frequencies being removed so that somebody just can't come online?
Yes.
Well, the, that, when those are decommissioned, the, the frequencies are not removed. Uh, it has to be programmed by somebody that has that ability to do it with a software. But when we decommission them, there's an ID that allows them into a system. Uh, they're part of a smart net system, just like a telephone.
Sure.
And so that ID is removed from the, um, the brain of the system, the computer that controls that, and that it will not be allowed into the system.
I'm fine. I just want to make sure that, you know, I, I thought we had in the past, just wanted to make sure. That was my only question.
Okay. So Dave moved on, see, it was Tom moved on, A5, Dave seconded. Any other discussion?
No.
No.
All right, all in favor, Dave?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. All right, that takes care of the resolutions on the administrative. That gets us down to the zoning report. Uh, Ben, is there anything that you wanted to call out on the zoning report? You are muted, Ben.
Uh, just to update the board that we continue to work with the property owner on Harlem Road, and they are, are making some progress. It's just slower than expected, but they did, um, make additional progress this week.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ben on the zoning from Dave or Tom?
Nope. I have none.
All right. The trustees have no questions on zoning. We'll move on to the road maintenance department. Looks like we have a good report here. I did see, um, uh, Bob, uh, was on the line, I thought. Bob, are you still out there?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Uh, well, good morning, Bob. How are you doing?
I'm doing good.
How are things with your staff?
Uh, we're doing pretty good. Uh, we had to come in Sunday. We spent four hours cutting a tree out of the road. Um, the Wilbur Road project.
The windstorm, is that what? Okay.
Uh, Wilbur Road project should, they should, they're supposed to start on it either tomorrow or Friday. If not, it'll be Monday. Um, they're getting other projects done that, they have to get this other project done before they can start ours. Um, they installed a new furnace in my office down here while I was on vacation. It's working very well, so, um, we picked up some air purifiers for the office for COVID reasons, so. And that's about, about it. Um, we've had some more issues with Tina.
Yeah, I saw that, Bob. Is your note, is that since our last, uh, trustee meeting?
Uh, well, actually, Sunday night, whenever I was coming back to the shop with tobacco, she pulled out of the cemetery and swerved clear over in my lane. And, uh, she seems to do that whenever she passes one of the township vehicles. Or it's either that or that's just the way she drives.
Okay. No, I was just concerned. Now, we had a discussion at the last trustee meeting about, um, I think the issue you had when the second bullet point there, and just want to make sure that if it happened again, you know, we're, we're looking to see what.
It hasn't happened again.
Okay. Well, we are, we did have some discussion about what we could do, and Ben is looking into that.
Right.
And thanks to you guys, you know, as Dave said as well, thanks for, you know, all your hard work.
Thank you. You're welcome. Um, that's all I have.
So, uh, Bob, on the tree that fell, who's the, who contacts the maintenance department? Is it the place department?
Actually Harlem Township called me because one of their residents called in because it was laying across the road into their yard. So it was, it was a very substantial tree. We're still not done cutting it up yet either. So we just got it cut out of the road where the road could be used, so.
And, and where's that again?
Up on the north end of Bealeheimer.
Uh-huh.
The tree was in the roadway? Bobby, tree was in the roadway?
The part that broke off is, but the rest of it is, the, the standing part of it is out of the roadway.
Uh-huh. Okay.
So.
Right.
So Bob and his crew, uh, removed the tree from the roadway. Tried to, uh, cut it down. They are going to leave the wood for the homeowner. It'll be homeowner's responsibility to remove the remainder of the trunk.
That it's still standing outside the roadway. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Very good. Thanks, Bob, and, uh, appreciate the, you being here for the meeting. All right, that gets us down to the fire department. Chief Rob?
Morning trustees, morning everyone. Uh, since the, uh, the last report, uh, we've had the eighty-seven EMS runs, thirty-seven fire runs. So you can see that, uh, our activity is, is, uh, beginning to, uh, return to, uh, normal. Um, we have, uh, one resolution, uh, before you, uh, and that resolution is for tuition reimbursement for, uh, Captain Dudley, and that is, uh, F1. And that's the only, uh, resolution that we have for you, uh, this morning.
And, uh, Jack, I saw, I saw the fire truck met its twenty-five hundred dollar minimum.
It did. I was going to mention that when, uh, we, uh, uh, were finished with the resolutions and that. Uh, I was going to ask, uh, Captain Dudley this morning, how many people actually took a look at it? And, uh, they're still out, um, on runs. They picked up another auto accident, so I haven't been able to see how many looks we had.
Uh, Captain Dudley reported to me it was, uh, several hundred, up to five hundred views. Uh, I think there were between twelve and twenty bids on it.
Wow. Okay, uh, we have resolution two zero one 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 eight, F1, a resolution to approve tuition reimbursement for, um, Captain Dudley up to five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. I so move. Dave?
I'll second that.
Dave seconded. All in favor, Dave?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right, anything else from the fire department?
Yeah, and on tuition reimbursement, I sent out an email yesterday to the other, um, uh, mech partners that we have, uh, in the dispatch center, just asking them what their tuition reimbursement process was and costs and programs and that, just to kind of get a comparison to see what they're doing, uh, in relationship to, uh, to how we're handling our tuition reimbursement. Um, for the lateral transfers, uh, we're proceeding through that process. We had twenty-seven applications of, um, people with, um, excellent experience and I think, uh, wealth of knowledge and talents. Uh, we narrowed them to ten. We, we start the, uh, we decided just because of the uptick, uh, that we were, you know, our original intent was to try to meet with them in person, uh, but we're moving to, uh, virtual interviews, at least, uh, with, uh, this initial ten that, that we're working with. So we'll be interviewing them virtually today, Friday and Monday. And then, uh, we'll have a, a group of five that will be, uh, ready to interview further and present to the board. Uh, Ben had, uh, put in a, sent you an email about, uh, Ethos Labs. Um, that's a company that, uh, uh, some other mech agencies are working with. And the process will be that, well, if you go to CVS and you drive through, uh, those, uh, um, uh, quick, um, COVID checking, uh, that, that, that's actually a, a self-swab. Uh, and so that's a practice that we're going to be doing with Eso's labs. At the, uh, the firefighter paramedics will be doing their own nasal swabs. They'll be putting it in the, uh, the vial, and then UPS will be picking that up for us and, uh, and collecting it and getting to the labs. Uh, the turnaround time has been between twenty-four to thirty hours. So depending on, uh, when, when they receive it at the labs, um, you know, uh, would this decide whether it would be, uh, the test results within the same day or early the next day. Um, and so we'll be ready to do that within a couple of days. It took some time for us to get and create the portal. Um, they sent us a, um, a label maker that prints the barcodes that we need to be able to ship and do everything like that. So, uh, we'll be ready to do our testing in-house. Um, and then, um, on the COVID money, uh, we're still investigating. Uh, I will, trying to encumber, as Ben said, uh, touchless faucets. I'm into the fourth contractor now that I'm trying to get quotes from, just to be able to end up and add touchless features, um, for the non-transmission of COVID in rest, public restrooms, our restrooms, those kind of things. And, and even still struggling, uh, to, uh, find, uh, someone to, uh, do the replacement of the hot water system at this point. Uh, we've only got one, uh, individual that, uh, at this point that is, uh, uh, indicated to us that, uh, he's able to do the, uh, the hybrid system that we want, but we have not received a, a quote back from that individual at this point. So we're still working on all of those things, uh, and that's all I've got for you.
And why do we, I know that we talked about the hybrid system and some of the benefits. Is, is that a, an essential part that we must require? Or should we look at option one from the vendors, and then option two is the hybrid system?
Uh, I, well, I just, I don't think it's a matter of the difference between the two systems. I think it's, uh, uh, availability right now. I've got Rich coming in today to try to take a look at it. Um, so I think that there is so much work out there right now. Um, two, two of the people said they just don't have the staff to be able to, uh, Um, two, two of the people said they just don't have the staff to be able to, uh, uh, even install the faucets, the touchless faucets in the public restrooms, everything like that, at this point, that they have so much work.
Wow.
Is there any reason that Bobby and his guys can't replace those faucets? I mean, those are just simple kind of just lavatory faucets, right?
No, well, they, they all, they generally have a, a mixing valve that goes with them, so you have to set them for a particular temperature and that, because, uh, i- if you, you notice when you go into a public restroom, you just hit faucet and it, it turns on both the hot and cold. So there's mixing valves and everything like that. So there's a bit more, uh, that goes along with the installation of those systems.
Yeah, I understand, but, um, you know, they sell these things off the shelf at Home Depot and places like that for, um, for these things, or, yeah, so I, I mean, I would just engage Bob and see for the, at least for the public restrooms, if you can't find something off the shelf that, that works.
And one of the, yeah, one of the things that we looked at, we did look at some of the ones at Home Depot and that, and then we looked at some of the, the other ones, um, that were commercially available through some of the larger, uh, larger, uh, wholesale places. And, uh, there's quite a bit of difference in the, uh, the style and the models that are used between a commercial setting, a public restroom setting.
Jack, I understand. Uh, and I'm sorry, I'm just kind of time constrained here. So my suggestion is check in with Bob. If that doesn't work, that's fine. Um, but, um, yeah, I just unfortunately I got a meeting coming up that I gotta get wrapped up for. But the only, the only other comment I've got is that I'd ask that, as you're talking about issues before council, that you work with Ben to make sure that we're consistently measuring or, uh, messaging, because, you know, just in our, our last month, we had fifty-two percent of our runs inside, uh, Plain Township and forty-eight percent of them were outside. So while it's true that the, um, care facilities that have, uh, become resident in our, our community are generating runs, we still aren't, uh, hitting anywhere near, um, the kind of volume that, uh, out of them that we are out of, uh, these automatic response runs. And, uh, you know, our, uh, our in-house, our in-community, um, facilities are paying taxes and supporting us in other ways. Uh, so I just would ask that we consistently message on this.
Uh, okay. Anything else, Jack, from the fire department?
No, sir.
Thank you, Jack. Um, that gets us down to the Township Fiscal Office. Bud, uh, I'll let you, we got a couple of resolutions there. Anything else, uh, that you wanted to call out? Bud, you're on mute.
Hi, I got, I went back to the phone. I don't know why this mic isn't working on this camera, but, uh, yeah, we've got the, uh, uh, bank reconciliation and the, uh, October month-end reports along with the two resolutions is all.
Okay, and the first resolution is two zero one 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 eight B1, a resolution to amend the township credit card policy. And, uh, what is the amendment that we're making to the policy?
Uh, in this resolution, we are, um, removing, uh, Cindy and put, uh, putting Jack Rupp on the Home Depot card and removing Cindy from the Huntington National Bank card.
Okay. Um, okay, questions?
Yeah, I'm just looking, I, I don't have a question other than I'm looking for the resolution and I can't find it in my agenda.
Yeah, one second.
Dave, I can email it to you. I had, uh, also mentioned that earlier. In fact, I emailed Ben, haven't heard back from him, but he probably hasn't had a chance to check his email from before, um, the meeting here, when I recognized that, uh, these did not, for some reason, did not get, uh, forwarded to you guys, uh, in the packet. Uh, but I will, uh, send them to you now. I just, I, I had, uh, Courtney went over to the, uh, office for me to, uh, email them to me, uh, and they are now.
Sounds like Ben's got it. Yeah, here we go. Thanks, Ben. Yeah, okay, I'm fine with this.
I put, they're in your e, your inbox now, but yes, those are the, uh.
So the change, a- as Mr. Zapatelli described, is to update the Home Depot card to identify Jack Rupp as fire chief. Uh, we are removing the card issued to, uh, Cindy Powell and adding a card for Courtney Rogers, uh, so that the fiscal office has a, a card available.
Okay, so I read the motion and I'll move on it. Do I have a second, Dave?
Yes, I second.
David Homestead seconded. All in favor? Dave?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Okay, could you go back to the agenda, the split screen there, uh, Ben?
One second.
Yeah, the, the next one, Dave, is to accept the resignation of the fiscal, uh, finance officer. That's B2.
Yes, effective, uh, November twenty-seventh.
November.
I do want to add for the record, uh, Cindy has been an outstanding employee. She's done a great job for me, and she will be very missed.
Okay, thank you, Bud. Um, the resolution for the, uh, the twenty-seventh has been read. Um, so, uh, Dave, did you move on that?
Uh, no, but I can. I would move it up. Sure, resolution two zero one 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 eight B2, a resolution to accept the resignation of the finance officer. I still move.
Tom?
I will second.
All in favor? Uh, Tom?
I say yes, and I thank Cindy for her service to the township.
Dave?
Uh, yes, and I also, uh, thank Cindy and appreciate all the efforts that, um, that she's put in on our behalf.
And I'll vote yes too, and thank Cindy for her tenure at the township and her hard work on behalf of the fiscal office. Thank you. Okay, that gets us down, there's no more resolutions in the fiscal office. Do we have any old business?
No, I've got no old newer township trustee.
I would be the same.
Okay, that means we have an executive session pursuant to the Ohio Revice Code one twenty-one point two-two G1 for employment discussion and compensation. Um, we're going to need a roll call for that. I'll move on the motion. Uh, Tom, do I have a second?
Yes, I will second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Bud, you're on mute.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsky?
Yes.
And Mr. Homestead.
Yes, and the executive session's open, ready for you guys. Who all is, uh, joining?
Uh, the three, uh, four of us and, uh, uh, Ben, please.
Okay, great.
All right, so Ben, Ben and the trustees and the fiscal office, thank you.
So this is Mike Durk. Could I just say one thing before I sign off? I apologize. I forgot to mention earlier, we did approve in our budget body cameras for our police department, that they will be ordering those and they will be purchasing them and putting them into effect. So, uh, a lot of discussion, but, and it's been going on for a couple of years looking at it, but we have approved for them to wear body cameras. They'll be individuals to officers, just as their weapons are, and, uh, they'll go on whenever their flashing lights go on or their car cameras go on, or if another, they're with another officer at a scene and another officer turns on their cameras. So, uh, that, that was passed yesterday in our budget. Apologize. I'll let you guys go to session.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Very good.
The trustees will be joining us momentarily.
The trustees will be joining us momentarily.
Hello.
We hear you, Tom.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, it looks like everybody's back. Mr. Ferguson, you there?
I am. We're coming back out of executive session. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Ripski.
Yes.
And Mr. Olmstead, I don't know if he's on or not. He did have to step out.
He had to step out. All right, so we're back out of executive session and we do have some specific actions on behalf of the fiscal office. Mr. Fiscal Officer, do you want to specifically give us an update on the resolution that was passed?
Yes, what we would like to do is request the board to amend the Resolution 201118B1, I'm sorry, B2. On the resignation date of Cindy Powell, we would like to amend that from November 27th to December 1st.
Okay, Tom, I'm going to move on that. Do I have a second from you?
Yes, I will second.
Okay, Tom, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, the motion passed. Any other business that we need to conclude before adjени?
I have none.
I have none. Nor do I. Thank you, everybody, for calling in and joining on the meeting. Be safe out there and we'll see you.
Do we need a motion to close meeting?
Yeah, I think we do. I'll motion to adjourn, Tom.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, Tom?
Aye.
All right, motion adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, see you guys.
Thanks, Ed. Bye.